We're live.
Okay.
Good.
I'm going to call this meeting to order. I just want to say that we apologize for being a few minutes late. We were having technical difficulties with regard to going live. Can everyone stand for the pledge, please? I pledge allegiance
To the God of the United States of America and to the public for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, and in no way is wrong.
Reading of the minutes from the Board of Commissioners meeting April 21, 2021. Do I have a motion to approve those minutes?
So moved.
Second.
On the question, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Proclamation presentation 21-0126 regarding Mental Health Awareness Month. Chris?
Yes.
Okay, whereas mental health is part of overall health, one in five adults experience a mental health problem in any given year. And the COVID-19 pandemic has increased the number of people experiencing feelings of anxiety and depression. Approximately one half of chronic mental illness begins by the age of 14 and three quarters by the age of 24. And whereas suicide is the 10th leading cause of death in the United States and the secondly leading cause among young adults, 90% of people who die by suicide had shown symptoms of mental health condition according to interviews with family, friends, and medical professionals. And whereas early identification and treatment can make a difference in successful navigation of mental illness and recovery, we come together with every citizen and community to help end the silence and stigma that for too long has made people feel isolated and alone and discouraged people from getting help. Through public education and working together to raise awareness, we can help improve the lives of individuals and families affected by mental illness. And now therefore, we Commissioners, Debbie Dominic, Jerry Notteriani, myself, Chris Schirmack, Commissioners of Lackawanna County, Pennsylvania, do hereby recognize and proclaim May 2021 to be Mental Health Awareness Month in Lackawanna County.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The second proclamation 21-0127 is regarding Motorcycle Safety Awareness Month. Whereas our scenic highways, city streets, and county roads make the 40 municipalities of Lackawanna County a very popular destination for motorcyclists from around the country. And whereas the safe operation of a motorcycle requires using acquired skills developed through a combination of training and experience, good judgment, and thorough knowledge of traffic laws and licensing requirements. And whereas it is imperative that our residents be aware, show consideration for, and share the road with motorcycles on our streets and state highways, and also recognize the importance of motorcycle safety. And whereas the National Highway Traffic Safety Administration has declared the month of May as Motorcycle Awareness Month, and the Commissioners wish to join in educating residents about the growing number of motorcyclists on Lackawanna County roadways. Working together, we can prevent accidents and, most importantly, save lives. Now therefore, we, Debbie Dominic, Jerry Notteriani, and Chris Schirmack, Commissioners of the County of Lackawanna, Pennsylvania, do hereby recognize and proclaim May 2021 to be Motorcycle Safety Awareness Month in Lackawanna County. And I just want to say that I still don't understand the no helmet requirement on motorcycles, but they just, if you're a motorcycle, if you drive a motorcycle, wear a helmet because it could save your life. And if you are on the road and not on a motorcycle, but you're sharing the roadway with motorcyclists, be very careful and just try to save lives because usually when these accidents occur between motorcyclists and vehicles, they're usually tragic, and we'd like to prevent that in county roads and highways. Thank you.
I agree. I actually have a Harley of my own, and I ride that. I do wear a helmet, so just be aware of the motorcycles out there on the roads. I would appreciate that. And also with the mental health, just let everyone know, the county courthouse is lit up in green for the month of May in recognition of mental health awareness. So it's a big part of the county, and now with the new County Suicide Prevention Alliance, it means a lot. So thank you very much.
Okay, opportunity for the public to address the board agenda items only. Trace?
Hi, we received no emails today.
Okay, we'll move on to resolutions. Resolution number 21-0125, approving current payables. Brian?
Be resolved, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County does hereby approve the following payables. Lackawanna County General Fund, numbers 320672-321240, inclusive totaling $3,614,521.93. Electronic fund transfers, including all payroll accounts totaling $783,456.74. Adopted at a regular meeting of the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County held on May 5, 2021. Madam Commissioner.
I'm assuming everybody's had an opportunity to review the current payables. Do I have a motion to approve?
Motion.
Second.
On the question, all in favor?
Aye.
Resolution 21-0117, awarding the home grant construction contract. Brian?
Be resolved, the Board of Commissioners of the County of Lackawanna does hereby award the following home grant construction contract for the Grace Street apartment project to D&amp;M Construction Unlimited Incorporated, 107 North Turnpike Road, PO Box 132 in Dalton, Pennsylvania, 18414. Lowest, most responsible, and qualified bidder for $702,500. Adopted at a regular meeting of the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County held on May 5, 2021. Here to speak upon that, Madam Commissioner, is our Director of Economic Development, Ms. Brenda Sacco.
Morning, everyone.
Morning.
Morning.
This is a standard required agreement for the home program. This resolution states that the county is entering into a contractor agreement with D&amp;M Construction Unlimited for the Grace Street apartment project in the amount of $702,500. D&amp;M was the lowest, most responsible bidder, and this project will provide renovations for a multifamily affordable housing project in Old Ford. Does anyone have any questions?
Okay, do I have a motion to approve Resolution 21-0117?
Moved.
Second.
Second.
On the question, all in favor?
Aye.
Resolution 21-0118, entering into a cooperation agreement with the Borough of Elephant.
Be resolved, the Board of Commissioners of the County of Lackawanna is hereby authorized to enter into a cooperation agreement with the Borough of Elephant for the Elephant Borough Kimberly Circle Street Improvement Project. Be it further resolved, the Board of Commissioners of the County of Lackawanna does hereby award the following community development block grant construction contract for the Borough of Elephant, the Kimberly Circle Improvement Project, to Waco Incorporated, 198 O'Connell Road, Mayfield, Pennsylvania, the lowest, most responsible, and qualified bidder for Adopted at a regular meeting of the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County held on May 5, 2021. Once again, Madam Commissioner, here is Director Sacco.
This is a standard required agreement for the CDBG program, and this resolution states that the county is entering into the cooperation agreement with the Borough of Elephant and a contractor agreement with Waco. And again, they were the lowest, most responsible bidder for the Elephant Borough Kimberly Circle Street Improvement Project in the amount of $62,307.40. Does anyone have any questions?
No.
Okay, do I have a motion to approve Resolution 21-0118?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
On the question, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Resolution 21-0119, entering into a cooperation agreement with the Borough of Clark Summit. Brian?
Be resolved, the Board of Commissioners of the County of Lackawanna is hereby authorized to enter into a cooperation agreement with the Borough of Clark Summit for the Clark Summit Borough Building ADA Elevator Reconstruction Project. Be it further resolved, the Board of Commissioners of the County of Lackawanna does hereby award the following community development block grant construction contract for the Borough Buildings ADA Elevator Reconstruction Project. Current elevator technology, 129 Maple Drive, Shalola, Pennsylvania, the lowest, most responsible, and qualified bidder for $126,000. Adopted at a regular meeting of the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County held on May 5, 2021. Once again, Madam Commissioner, here is Director Sacco.
This is another CDBG project, and this is, again, the required documents, the cooperation agreement, and the contractor agreement. This time it is with current elevator technology, and it's for the Clark Summit Borough Building ADA Elevator Reconstruction Project in the amount of $126,000. And they, again, were the lowest, most responsible bidder. Any questions?
Okay, do I have a motion to approve 21-0119?
Moved.
Second.
On the question, all in favor?
Aye.
Resolution 21-0120, entering into a cooperation agreement with the Borough of Blakely. Brian?
Be resolved, the Board of Commissioners of the County of Lackawanna is hereby authorized to enter into a cooperation agreement with the Borough of Blakely for the Blakely Borough Mott Haven Section 3 Improvement Project. Be it further resolved, the Board of Commissioners of the County of Lackawanna does hereby award, I'm sorry, the following community development block grant construction contract for the Borough of Blakely. New Enterprise Stone and Lime Company, 215 East Sailor Avenue, Wilkes-Barre, Pennsylvania, lowest and most responsible qualified bidder for $102,025.65. Adopted at a regular meeting of the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County held on May 5, 2021. Once again, Madam Commissioner, here is Director Sacco.
This is, again, a CDBG project, this time in the Borough of Blakely, so we have a cooperation agreement with Blakely and a contractor agreement with New Enterprise Stone and Lime Company, and they were the lowest, most responsible bidder, and it's for the Mott Haven Section 3 Improvement Project in the amount of $102,025.65. Anyone have any questions?
No.
Okay, do I have a motion to approve Resolution 21-0120?
Motion.
Second.
On the question, all in favor?
Aye.
Resolution 21-0121, approving an addendum with the Career Technology Center. Brian?
Be resolved, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County, on behalf of the Lackawanna County Workforce Development Board, do hereby approve an addendum with the Career Technology Center in accordance with the Pennsylvania Department of Labor Industry approval of the Business Education Financial Agreement. Adopted at a regular meeting of the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County held on May 5, 2021. Once again, here is Director Sacco.
This resolution states that the county, on behalf of the Workforce Development Board, is amending an agreement with the Career Technology Center to extend the date of completion of a business education partnership grant from June 30, 2021, to June 30, 2022. The original agreement was executed in October of 2020, and that agrees for, or allows for an amendment for these such services. Anyone have any questions?
No.
No one has any questions for Brenda? Do I have a motion to approve 21-0121?
Moved.
Second.
On the question, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, Brenda.
Bye.
Resolution 21-0122, approving a contract extension with the Scranton Cultural Center. Brian?
Be it resolved, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County does hereby approve a contract extension with the Scranton Cultural Center on behalf of the Lackawanna County Courts for the COVID-19 court relocation rental to begin June 1, 2021, and June 30, 2021. Rental of spaces are the Weinberg Theater in lobby, the Grand Ballroom in lobby, and Weinberg Stage, and to include increased maintenance and disinfecting sound systems and internet access with a cost of $13,850 per month. Adopted at a regular meeting of the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County held on May 5, 2021. Commissioners, what we're doing here is extending out our contract with the Scranton Cultural Center for jury selections up to the end of June. We feel the courts need to use one more month down there until the end of June, and then we will probably, in all likelihood, go back to the courthouse in the fall. So we're extending this out for 30 more days.
Does anyone have any questions for Brian? Do I have a motion to approve 21-0122?
Motion.
Second.
On the question, all in favor?
Aye.
21-0123, authorizing a contribution to the Scranton Plan. Brian?
Be it resolved, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County is hereby authorized to make a contribution to the Scranton Plan, the Greater Scranton Chamber of Commerce, in the amount of five annual installments of $15,000 for the years 2021 through 2025. Adopted at a regular meeting of the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County held on May 5, 2021. Commissioners, the county has been proud to be a supporter of the Scranton Plan over the years during the past year, and the prior administration, we fell off with our help with them with their Scranton Plan. The Commissioners are proud to be partners with the Scranton Chamber of Commerce. They have been vital to us in the past and also during the pandemic, and we look forward to being partners with them in the future. They are very good. They have been very, very helpful to us, especially distributing funds and helping people get back on their feet during this pandemic. We're proud to be helpful with them also.
Anybody have any questions? Okay, do I have a motion? Do I have a motion to approve 21-0123?
Motion.
Second.
On the question, all in favor?
Aye.
Resolution 21-0124, entering into an intergovernmental agreement. Brian?
Be resolved, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County do hereby approve and enter into an intergovernmental agreement by and between the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County, the Office of the Sheriff of Lackawanna County, and the Court of Common Pleas of Lackawanna County Domestic Relations Section for services of assigned deputy sheriffs to serve bench warrants and execute personal service for the establishment and enforcement of support obligations as required. Subject to the availability of federal funds, this agreement shall run through September 30, 2025. Adopted at a regular meeting of the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County held on May 5, 2021. Commissioners here to speak upon that is our Director of Domestic Relations, Ms. Kathy Hardaway.
Good morning.
Morning.
We're seeking approval for the intergovernmental agreement, as was said by Mr. Jeffers, between the Board of Commissioner, Sheriff's Office, Court of Common Pleas, and specifically Domestic Relations Section. The sheriff and deputies assigned to the DRS shall maintain detailed records of service and time spent on reimbursable activities. I do feel it's important to mention, the reimbursement is for salary and benefits at the current federal participation rate of 66%. This does not require additional hiring of sheriff deputies. They will assign current employees of the Deputy's Department. Therefore, the county will be reimbursed, and the general fund will receive salary and fringe benefits for those deputies. The deputies are, will be assigned 40 hours per week unless needed by the Sheriff's Office to perform other duties. Any additional questions?
No.
Okay, do I have a motion to approve 21-0124?
Motion.
Second.
On the question, all in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Thank you, Kathy.
Thanks, Kathy.
Thank you.
Thank you, Kathy.
Resolution 21-0130, entering a road maintenance agreement? I'm sorry, Brian.
All right, my mistake. Be it resolved, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County does hereby enter into a road maintenance agreement with the City of Scranton for the city's designation of a one-way street and county maintenance of the 300 block of Center Street to commence May 1, 2021. Adopted at a regular meeting of the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County held on May 5, 2021. Madam Commissioner, here to speak upon that is our Solicitor, Mr. Frank Rizorio.
Morning, everyone.
Morning.
Morning.
The agreement simply memorializes the arrangement between the City of Scranton and the County of Lackawanna relative to the county's use of the 300 block of Center Street to access our garages, loading docks, and other points of ingress and egress to the Lackawanna County Government Center. The county has requested that the City of Scranton allow the 300 block of Center Street to be made a one-way street to facilitate access to the government center. It would run from Wyoming Avenue to Penn Avenue. The agreement is slated to, the term of the agreement is yearly. There is no remuneration between the county and the city other than the $1 consideration. I've reviewed the agreement, everything's appropriate. This is an agreement I'd recommend the Commissioners enter into.
Thank you. Any questions? Say, do I have a motion to approve Resolution 21-0130?
Second.
On the question, all in favor?
Aye.
Resolution 21-0129, appointments to the Lackawanna County Planning Commission. Brian?
Madam Commissioner, I believe we are doing the cooperative agreement first.
I'm sorry.
That's quite all right.
All right, and that one is?
21-0131.
Okay, and that is the entering into a cooperation agreement. Go ahead.
Thank you. Be it resolved, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County does hereby enter into a cooperative grant agreement with the Pennsylvania Department of Aging for the period of July 1, 2021 through June 30, 2025, in the amount of $5,835,043 per fiscal year. Adopted at a regular meeting of the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County held on May 5, 2021. Madam Commissioner, here to speak upon that is our Director of Area of Aging, Mr. Jason Kavulich.
Hi, Jason.
Good morning, everyone. This is our, this is our aging agreement, and it is the base funding. It's 88% of the funding that the Lackawanna County Area Agency on Aging receives. It is our lottery dollar funding, and it is the agreement that we have with the Department of Aging as to how we implement and, you know, provide aging services in our community. The agreement only has primarily language changes. There's not any real substantive changes. One change that I would like to highlight is there was, in the previous agreement, a section that allowed for the Department of Aging to penalize an area agency on aging if they were out of compliance. The secretary and the team in Harrisburg have removed that section in this new agreement. They don't feel that penalizing an agency financially will get them the results that they would like to see in terms of improving performance. But other than that, it is primarily just language changes in terms of using different verbiage than they have in previous agreements.
Anybody have any questions for Jason?
No, thank you.
Do I have a motion to approve 21-0131?
Second.
On the question, all in favor?
Aye.
Thanks, Jason.
Thank you, Jason.
Okay, I got ahead of myself. Now we're on 21-0129, appointments to the Lackawanna County Planning Commission. Brian?
Be it resolved, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County is hereby reappoint the following individuals to the Lackawanna County Planning Commission. Rosemary Broderick, Lakewood Drive, South Abington Township, for a four-year term to begin immediately and expire on December 31, 2024. Harry Lindsey, Lawrence Avenue Music, a four-year term to begin immediately and expire on December 31, 2022. Tom Owen Jr. of West State Street in Archibald, a four-year term to begin immediately and expire on December 31, 2023. Jermaine Carey, 505 Gladiola Drive, Clark Summit, a four-year term to begin immediately and expire on December 31, 2024. And be it further resolved, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County does hereby appoint the following individuals to the Lackawanna County Planning Commission. Carol Scramoli, East Strinker Street in Dumars, a four-year term to begin immediately and expire on December 31, 2023. Chet Merly, 104 High School Street, Metro, a four-year term to begin immediately and expire on December 31, 2024. And Tony Grisanti of Hemlock Street in June, a four-year term to begin immediately and expire on December 31, 2024. Adopted at a regular meeting of the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County held on May 5, 2021. Commissioner, these are individuals who have been reappointed and those who have sought some seats onto the planning commission that we've spoken with Ms. Sacco about, and she approves of all these individuals.
Okay, any questions? Do I have a motion to approve 21-0129?
Motion.
Second.
On the question, all in favor?
Aye.
Opportunity for the public to address the board.
Hi, we still have received no emails.
Hi. There's other business. So we did a letter to the Lackawanna County Prison Correction Officers that I'd just like to read in honor of them. It says, Dear Lackawanna County Prison Correction Officers, today marks the 41st anniversary of President Ronald Reagan designating this week as National Correctional Officers Week. It is also a day that gives us an opportunity to honor and recognize all women and men serving in the Lackawanna County's correction system. This is a special week to celebrate and bring awareness to the importance either as a correction officer or support staff and the significance of your profession. In 1996, Congress expanded the honor to include all the women and men working in corrections. National Correctional Officers and Employees Week is a fitting occasion to honor all our employees at the prison. As President Reagan wrote in the original proclamation, "The professionalism, dedication, and courage exhibited by these officers throughout the performance of these demanding and often conflicting roles deserve our utmost respect. The important work of correctional officers often does not receive the recognition from the public it deserves. It is appropriate that we honor the many contributions and accomplishments of these men and women who are a vital component of the field of corrections. On behalf of the residents of Lackawanna County, we dedicate today to you, our unseen public servants. We recognize the sacrifices that you make every day. We want to take the opportunity to honor, salute, and thank all the women and men who serve in corrections." So we just want to give a shout out to everybody working in any prison system, but particularly in ours. Anything else?
No.
Just thanks to Brendan with our tax sale last week. It was very successful, a lot of hard work, so thanks for that. Last night, we had an unprecedented storm here in the Mid Valley area, and locally it devastated some of these roads. These guys have been out working all night, the DPW crews, our roads and bridges guys, they've gotten the messes, for the most part, cleaned up. It was, it's bad up here, so thank you to all those folks. And just remember, everybody get vaccinated. We're getting close. Get out, get your second one if you didn't, and get your first one, especially if you didn't get that. We can get back to normal here. Thank you.
Hey, Brian, I believe you have a couple things you would like to say?
Ms., four items for the public, real quick, and the first one is touching on exactly what Commissioner Schirmack has talked about, about the flooding in the Mid Valley. I think it's important that we let the people know what is closed out there. Dundaff Street in Dixon City was going to be closed until approximately 3:00 p.m. The Old State Road and Schoolhouse Road in Monroe Township towards North Enverland Township is also being closed. I'm reading this right from the Times website that Dave Han sent in earlier. In the Scranton-Carbano area, the highway, the state route of 309, which is Laurel Hill, that's going to be opening up soon. We just want everyone to know the floodgates in Scranton are going to be opening up soon, and just to be careful out there while the public workspeople are out cleaning up the streets. Item number two, the ballot box. Ballot boxes have been delivered to the following locations: Carbano City Hall, Clark Summit Municipal Building, Dixon City Municipal Building, Music Municipal Building, Roaring Brook Municipal Building, and of course, we have ours in the Lackawanna County Government Center here, which we will be open until 7 o'clock at night receiving any mail-in ballots. All these locations can receive mail-in ballots from anywhere in Lackawanna County. You just don't have to be able to, you don't have to live in that particular area. You can drop it off any one of these. All right, and number three, our vaccines. We're talking about opening up the state on Memorial Day. We are currently in the mid-60 percentile here in Lackawanna County. We have 108,015 people with at least one dose in them. We would like to see that number raised between 10,000 to 15,000 people more so that we can open up on a general basis and get back to a sense of normalcy around here. That number between 10,000 and 15,000 will get us to the 70% to 75 percentile of individuals vaccinated in this county. I'm sure everyone is aware that our county is still running third in the state for most vaccinations, only behind Montour and Forest Counties. So we're very pleased with our providers. We're very pleased with all the county workers that have helped make this possible. And we will still have clinics opening up, and you can go to our website, and you can click on our orange button and find out where vaccines are being available at this very moment in time, and you can call and get an appointment to go get vaccinated. We encourage everyone to get vaccinated as soon as possible. Finally, the last thing I just want Finally, the last thing I just want to recognize real quick, our retirement of our EMA Director, Mr. Richard Barboulis. Mr. Barboulis has been with us almost close to 40 years. I mean, 30 years, 35 years? Chris, what was it?
Well, 20, almost 27.
27 years.
To be exact.
We had a little going away for him yesterday. We will miss him dearly. He was a great, great and vital supporter of our, everything with the EMA, PMA, FEMA, anybody that, anytime that we needed something, he was a great guy to go to. He was very helpful with all the vaccination sites and everything that he's put into our, our county over the last 30 years will be sorely missed. His replacement is a very good qualified individual, Mr. Tom Taylor, and we look forward to working with him in the future, too. That's all I have, Missus.
Well, he was, he was tested last night, so he, he did okay.
Right.
So, and, and I think before, when I was thanking Brenda, I think I said, I meant to say Barbility, so thank you, Barb, if I did say that. It's been a long morning, so.
That's all I have, Madam Commissioner.
I missed the party unfortunately yesterday, so to Mr. Barboulis, I wish you all the best.
I ate your cake for you.
Yes, he did.
That's just mean, Chris.
I had your hot dog.
That's okay. Anything else from anyone? All right, I'll take a motion for adjournment.
Motion.
Second.
On, on the question?